I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Appreciate you. Go ahead and sit back down. All right, do I have an approval to accept the agenda as written?
I'll wait in there.
Okay. Laura, a second.
Ashlyn.
Thank you, Shanae. All right, and all in favor? All righty. All right, that moves us and bring us to the financial report. And Dr. Brooks is going to give that this evening, so Dr. Brooks, you're up.
Our financial director has submitted the information that's in your packet. Our general fund at the end of January is 4.6 million in our fund balance as we plan for our next school year. We have completed 58.3% of the school year, and we are at 57% of our expenditures. And we have received 55% in our revenue.
Okay.
So again, that's looking great. We are not spending as much as far as we are along in the school year, but we haven't received as much either. Unfortunately, our January ESPOLOST is another month that we have seen a decline. We had $62,000 in ESPOLOST for the month of January, and as you noticed, we've had a decline every month since August. So we do hope that with the new Perry Brothers Gas and Go and the truck stop coming at the end of the month, that we will see some increases in that. And just as a reminder, SPOLOST funds our technology, our building upgrades, and anything with maintenance and operation. All of our IMPACT aid has been completed and submitted, and we hope to be able to start receiving those funds as soon as the federal government releases them. That's usually between April and May.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions on that? Please continue to shop local. It helps us out, so. To include when you shop online, if you don't know that already, continue to do so. All right, so we're going to move into your superintendent's report. All right, you're up again.
Okay. To begin with, welcome everyone. Happy Valentine's. Thank you for coming out tonight. It gives me great honor for our first recognition in our report is to talk a little bit about February. We know that February is representative of Black History Month, and last year, we had the opportunity to recognize one of our local citizens and the contributions that they've done in our community. So we want to stay with that in terms of the history for our Chattahoochee County for Casita. And tonight, I would like to recognize Ms. Dolores Baker. We are just so honored to have her with us, and we are going to promote this on social media after this evening, but I just want to read a little bit about her bio as we go forward. Ms. Dolores has been a resident of Chattahoochee County most of her life. She has served our school system and our community. She has worked in our school system for over 34 years. She worked as a secretary, a lunchroom bookkeeper, accounts payable at the board office, the Chattahoochee daycare. She worked with communications there. And after she completed multiple degrees, including her business certificate, her bachelor's from Troy University, also at University of Georgia, the school fiscal officer because of the leadership of Ms. Dolores. Not only has she served our school system, but she continues to serve our community. She's worked as a volunteer and a board member on Family Connections, the Chattahoochee County Health Board, the volunteer income tax preparation assistance to help folks with their taxes. She's volunteered at the rec department as a community softball coach, and also many other organizations across the community. She's worked with New Horizons as they help to look at rural housing, especially in our area, and helping our families in need. She has donated such a significant amount of her time to make us better. And Ms. Dolores is a member of Kingsville Baptist Church. We want to honor this evening.
Certainly. I know a lot of people here, some of the teachers as well, but to Dr. Brooks, the school board member, Chattahoochee, in time staff, the student body, and to the community. I'm very humbled and grateful for the contribution to be recognized during Black History Month. I do not take this honor lightly, and whatever I can do moving forward, I will continue my support, not only for the community, but abroad as well. And she's already stole my favorite quote because I was going to leave. So again, thank you, Dr. Brooks, to the board and to the community, and to the staff, and Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolores, and thank you for making us better every day. The next on the superintendent's report is a memorandum of understanding with Georgia Southwestern University. And so as many of you may be aware, our nation is in a crisis in terms of recruiting and retaining highly qualified, highly skilled teachers. And we are so proud and excited to announce that we are going to partner with Georgia Southwestern University so that their college students in their senior year can partner with us as interns. So not only is it helping broaden the knowledge of Chattahoochee County schools, but it's allowing students who are in their senior year at college to find a fit here, work with some of our highly skilled teachers, and help reduce our class size and help get them acclimated. As many of you know, in college, you have to student teach anyway. What we're excited about is those student teachers would be actually here as a full year intern, getting their college credit, doing their student teaching, and being ready for a job straight with us. So we are very excited. We have a group of high school juniors and seniors who will be going to Georgia Southwestern as we also want to promote our own students for the teaching profession, and we hope to see those students back very soon as our interns and then as our teachers. So this is all about growing our own and building for the future. So we're very excited about this next step with Georgia Southwestern. And then the last thing on the report is just a reminder, February 25th is our whole board governance training, so this is our annual required training, and you'll see it as a called meeting for Saturday, February 25th.
Nine AM.
It is open to the public if anyone wants to come to board training on a Saturday.
Super awesome. All right, we're going to move on then to give the floor to Ms. Heard there and go with our, the super exciting part of why we're here, which is to recognize our students and staff for their accomplishments this month, and we're grateful for that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we will begin with our Students of the Month at the Chattahoochee County Education Center for the month of January, and I am going to start with our youngest student of the month in pre-K, Gabriela Reyes. I tell you what, because it seems like we've two for two with siblings, so how about we help your brother come forward, who was our kindergarten student of the month? All right, Chris and Gabriela, come on forward. And I will share what both their teachers had to say about them. Gabriela's teachers, Ms. Richards says, "Being proud of Gabriela is an understatement. She entered my classroom in August saying less than 10 words and had little participation throughout the day. Now Gabriela is participating, she is engaged, and she is showing growth in all areas. She can write and spell her name without support, she can identify 18 letters of the alphabet, and her vocabulary has increased tremendously. Gabriela is a star that is shining so brightly in pre-K." Congratulations, Gabriela. Come back and get your medal. And her big brother, Chris, in kindergarten, who is our student of the month. Chris, his teachers have this to say. "Chris is always working hard and tries his very best. Chris loves to help others. He's always showing his Panther paws. We are so very proud of his hard work and progress this year. He is such a sweet, well-behaved young man." And next, our first grade student of the month is Mackenzie Bolt Huff. And I don't think Mackenzie is with us tonight, so we'll go on to our second grade student of the month, Elise Karadine. And Elise is not with us, so we'll go on to our third grade student of the month, Ms. Bailey Ivory, who is here in present. And Bailey's teachers have this to say about her. "Bailey is a hard worker in school. She makes sure she completes all assignments on time while putting her maximum effort into every assignment. She recognizes her weaknesses and looks for ways to improve. She is a kind person who treats her peers and teachers with respect. Since the beginning of third grade, I have watched Bailey grow from being quiet and sometimes unsure to becoming confident and a leader. We are so proud to acknowledge her as our student of the month." Congratulations, Bailey. Our fourth grade student of the month is Blake Beasley. And Blake is not with us tonight, so I'll go on to our fifth grade student of the month, McKenna Gasper. And McKenna is not with us either, and it is Valentine's Day, so we're going to say they're out celebrating. And last but certainly not least, our employee of the month, who is not with us tonight because of all his life right now for her family, but I want to recognize Ms. Kayla Johnson, who was our early intervention specialist, as our employee of the month.
Evening.
Before I get started, I do need to say a little something about Ms. Baker, because she, over the years, has always been one of my go-to people when I need something done. She's also got a rare quality that my grandmother had, but she can tighten you up and do it with a loving smile. That is a great attribute. I wanted to share one quick story. Many years ago, we had a family that wanted to move down here because this mother wanted her son to attend our school. They were having a hard time finding a place to stay. And so, like I said, Ms. Baker can get things done, so I called Ms. Baker up, and I was kind of trying to lay it all out there for her, and she just kind of cut me off and said, "Coach, I got two questions for you. A, is he a good boy?" I said, "Yes, ma'am, he's a good boy." She said, "Two, is he good? Meaning, is he a good football player?" I said, "Yes, ma'am, good football and basketball." She said, "All right, I got you. Don't worry about it." So you need people like this. Ms. Baker, I truly, truly appreciate you. All right. For our, for the middle high schools, staff member of the month is someone who you cannot spend any time around her and not leave with a smile. She is just an amazing person, brings so much to our school in so many ways, incredibly talented, incredibly loving. Ms. Nieves, our Spanish teacher. Ms. Nieves is one of those people that you don't cross paths with people like this too many times. She just is truly a great person, so Ms. Nieves, we really, really appreciate you. Our sixth grade student of the month is Connor Kemp.
He's at our baseball game.
Oh, yeah, baseball game. Our seventh grade student of the month is Kennedy Kaplan. Kennedy's teachers say that she is an amazing student. She has shown growth on her math, in math and ELA. Kennedy is kind to her classmates and staff. She's always on task. She goes above and beyond on classroom assignments, and we are happy to have Kennedy as a Chancook Panther. Congrats, Kennedy. Our eighth grade student of the month is Brendan King. Brendan's teacher nominated him for his quiet maturity. Let me just stop you. Quiet maturity in middle school is incredibly rare, so I want to thank you for that. And ability to be a role model for his peers. He was observed being extra kind to a struggling student in class, and that is what sparked Brendan's nomination for student of the month. Keep up the great work, Brendan. We are all proud of you. Our ninth grade student of the month is Joshua Brinkley. Joshua's teacher nominated him for exhibiting both growth and kindness. Joshua has attended Chattahoochee County schools over his educational career, and one teacher noted that he has grown into such a respectful and thoughtful young man. We are proud of all you have accomplished and proud to call you a Panther. Our 10th grade student of the month is Evelyn Connor. Evelyn is a student that has transitioned from a full-time virtual setting to an in-person learner and has made it look easeweet, which is not easy, by the way. We've had a lot of kids struggle with that. Evelyn is studious, participates 100% of class, and completes her homework in a timely manner. She is thoughtful of others and a model, and let me start over. She is thoughtful of others and models a Chancook Panther who will be college-ready and is growing to be a productive contributor in society. Our 11th grade student of the month is Matthew Shields. If you've had the pleasure of watching any of our broadcasts that we've done over the last few years, Matthew has been a star in many of those. He's incredibly talented. He's a student that really, he got into Chattahoochee County, and he was kind of quiet in a matter of, after Mr. Woodward had him for about six months, he just blossomed into an amazing student and really is helping to have a major impact on making our school the kind of school we want it to be. Thank you, Matthew. Our 12th grade student of the month is Gavin Miznan. Gavin is an extremely gifted student and was nominated for his efforts in branching out this school year to become a school leader. He manages school-based projects for the CTAU Business Department and FBLA, all while maintaining an excellent GPA and remaining active in dual enrollment courses. Thank you, Gavin. Just want to say thanks to everybody, and one more time to Ms. Baker, we really appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the point where we're going to take a break, actually. For those of you that had kids that ran up here and then immediately ran back before you could get pictures, that's why we're taking a break. So please take advantage of the backdrop, have your kids come up with their plaques, take some pictures, and then we'll go back into our action agenda items. You're more than welcome to stay for that. However, you don't have to if you don't want to, so we're not going to force you to stay. So the floor is yours. You've got the next five, six minutes. Get those pictures, please. Get those pictures, please.